All right, welcome everyone to the one week's endorsement interview. A lot of people here, so we might be forced to cut people off, but we're gonna try and give everyone equal time if we can. Yeah, so basically, the way we like to start this off is we're just gonna get everyone a couple minutes to kind of tell us a little bit about yourself, why you're running. So I'll start over here.
Yeah, so I'm Brian Conley. I'm the father of a trans teen activist and my wife works in Addictions Medicine Homeland Health. I've been a journalist for about 20 years, worked mostly in conflict zones, training, teaching and setting up local media agencies. And through that work, I've done everything from training journalists to I wrote a guide for strategic communications for Libyan city council members. And I wanted to kind of bring that expertise here to Portland because I think, you know, I've got a demonstrated track record of doing hard projects and seeing them through.
What do you currently do for work?
I train journalists. I work, I have a consulting firm called Fasila at the S.I.L.A.
And what sort of civic engagement have you had? Have you sat on like boards or nonprofit, that kind of thing?
No.
No? Okay.
KJ, she her pronouns. I am a mom. I am a small business owner of a web design and development agency. I am the chair of the Foster Pal Neighborhood Association and president of the Benson Tech Boosters, which is the 501(c)(3) fundraising organization for Benson Polytechnic High School. I'm running because I've been inspired by the work that I've done in the neighborhood association, would like that to, I'd like to expand that to District Three and Portland at large. And I have, in a past life, I've worked in a corporate environment where I managed multimillion dollar budget for one of the largest law firms in the world.
Which law firm?
D.L.A. Piper, and I should say for the IT department, not for the whole firm.
And what's the name of your development agency? Web development agency?
The name of what?
You're the web development agency currently?
OWL-X Collective. It's O.W.L.X. one word, but the X is capitalized. Real fancy. And then collective LLC.
Cool.
Do you have a portfolio?
And who, what clients?
We were X before Twitter was X, okay.
What sort of clients do you typically work for?
Primarily small business clients. We do have a nonprofit client here in Portland, and it's been so long since anyone's asked me specifics about my business. Not top of mind. But yeah.
Cool.
Most of them are businesses.
Great, thank you.
Chris Flannery, I use they/them pronouns. My day job's at the Housing Bureau. I work in the inclusionary housing program. And I've been an officer in my union for the, you know, since 2013, basically, since I showed up at the city. Being both involved at the Housing Bureau and with my union, I recognize what an opportunity this charter reform has given us. And I'm running because I want working class people to have a voice on city council. I want us to have a focus on what it takes to actually live here and make Portland go. And I've seen a lot of sort of big business interests, special interests, other, you know, somebody has a commissioner's number and they skip to the front of the line with a certain issue, and I want real people to get that kind of courtesy.
Sorry, what do you do for the housing program?
So the inclusionary housing program is the requirement by the city that was passed in 2017 to mandate that any apartment building with more than 20 units has to provide portable housing.
Yeah.
I help those developers meet the requirement and process incentives that offset the cost to them. So tax incentives, system development, charge waivers, that sort of thing.
Okay, cool. And in terms of civic experience, so you never run any boards or any, besides the union, are you?
Not currently. I've previously been a volunteer, but nothing to the extent that I listed on a resume, just here, there, everywhere.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
My name's Dan Gilb. I, my background's in software engineering, but now I am just full-time caregiver to my infant daughter. And I'm running because I feel that, I feel very strongly about urbanism. I'm an urbanist. I feel like the value in creating cities that are livable, walkable, great transit dance, these are all very important for conserving our environmental, for reducing our environmental impact and conserving our environment and a way to, not just that, but also as an economically viable way to live as a society. And I think that we can do a lot better than that, than we're doing now. So I feel very passionate about urbanism, and that is why I'm running.
Great. And do you have any civic experience?
If we think of something later, should we email you?
Sure, or yeah, throw it into an answer later.
Hi, I'm Patrick. I have a very diverse background career-wise, the hospitality arts, in-between stuff. I was a park ranger, but mostly my main focus is architectural design and urbanism. I earned a graduate degree from University of Oregon. I consider myself to be an experiential urbanist, which means the study of why a place is a good place and why it draws people into it. The reason why I got into this race was my neighborhood is over by the airport, 82nd and Fremont. And when I found out I was attached to southeast, I was like, oh my God, this is amazing. I tried to save a historic building on Belmont, that's how I got into this, and the owner of it tore it down in the middle of a snowstorm. So once you destroy the resource, they figure you can't really get involved. I've tried to get involved in the city. Testimony, all kinds of things like that. You have to wait eight hours to say two minutes while the councils are on their phone, you know, texting what they're gonna have for dinner. So it was a very discouraging experience. I think this is an awesome opportunity for the residents of our city to have a direct pipeline to city policy instead of feeling kind of alienated. And I consider myself, I rent a room in a house, so I don't even rent my own apartment. I am intimately aware of how hard it is to survive here. I've had experience living in Mount Post Five, which was an experiment gone sort of wrong. I am deeply interested in working class housing first and to have innovation, design-oriented solutions that protect the assets that we have and that we all share, and create new assets and limit liabilities. Because what, similar to Dan, I think he's seen that they're creating all kinds of liabilities for the future. And 2100, I think, is how I envision the city, and that's how I think I would be creating policy, to think of what kind of city are we giving to the next generation? It's really tragic if we give them a city that isn't, doesn't have the wonderful places that we got to enjoy and the high quality of life.
And sorry, where did you say you're working right now?
I'm kind of in a transition between a part-time job at the Architectural Heritage Center, but I have a design-build firm building very small things called City Love Cottage Company. And I'm also an actor and an artist.
Okay, great. So what was the store building in Belmont? Which one?
The address? Oh, boy. Well, there's that little stretch of Belmont that I think is one of the most special places in the United States, really. It was, it was the most well-preserved block. And then right in the middle of it is where this new building is. So in the middle of, does anybody know what street that is? Like 30th and?
Around the 30th?
Yeah, you know where Elto Lounge is? Like right up that block.
Okay.
Elto's on the corner of 33rd.
33rd, okay, so between 33rd and 32nd.
There used to be, sir, 33 right there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's a great little area.
Cool.
My name is Andy Bali, and I'm running for Portland City Council, round two. I originally ran in 2022. Came in third with a voter base of about 12,000 people, which was fantastic, just ran a clean and nice campaign. And I think since that time, you know, I'm obviously a Portland resident and I'm very invested in Portland. I live in Portland. I am at home in Portland and also work here. I also started my nonprofit here.
What's the nonprofit?
Next Level.
Oh, that's right.
Remember? Yeah. So I started a nonprofit, which is it helps frontline students actually like network and provides them with scholarships because going to school for frontline work is like so expensive. And it's just like a passion project. It's not a thing where I get a ton of grants from the, you know, government or taxpayers. It's just something that I do for fun, and I started it during COVID because I was bored. I'm running for Portland City Council this time around again because I think, you know, I would like to see public safety become a priority in the city. I would like to see us really addressing our homeless issues, which I think stem from addiction and mental health going unchecked. That's really what we see. I think we're just seeing the perpetuation of trauma and neglect in people and without it even being addressed or even baseline standard being looked at, we're just letting it go. The next thing would be just revitalization of Portland. I think that Portland has just lost so many taxpayers. We've lost so many businesses. People are fleeing the city and there's a reason for that, which we can get into, but there's a lot of moving parts. And last thing, and you know, there's so many things in the campaign that come up, but all of a sudden, education has come up as well. And I think, you know, Portland, we collect so many dollars for education and we have one of the poorest educational systems throughout the entire nation. And so that's really sad.
Great.
So I'm just running to kind of get the policies out there and, you know, see if I can make a change.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'm Theo Hathaway-Santer. I moved to Portland in 2007. I transferred from University of Anchorage, Alaska to study community development at Portland State University at the Urban Studies Department there. I currently work at Portland Community Reinvestment Initiatives. It's a 30-year-old nonprofit based in north and northeast Portland. The organization was set up to protect low-income housing for the black community in the neighborhood that was redlined in and has been subsequently gentrified out of the area. So every day I'm working one-on-one with some of the most housing insecure folks in our community, deeply understand the struggles that those folks go through. I'm also on the board of We Shine, board and organization that builds and runs microvillages as transitional housing. Each village has about 10 sleeping pods and folks are able to apply to get in and given wraparound services. They, we have a pretty high success rate of folks moving out into stable housing after a couple months. Very proud of the work that we're doing there. We're gonna be in the Give Guide this season, which is very exciting. I also sit on the Citizens Advisor Committee for JOHS and the Support of Housing Services Committee. Housing is a crisis in Portland and that is gonna be my main focus as a city councillor.
Great, thank you.
Hi, I'm Melody Bearwagen. I'm a guitar equipment repair person. I have a BS in chemistry from PSU. I was born and raised in Oregon City and moved to Portland when I was 18 and have been here ever since. I raised three kids here and worked in the private sector my whole life. And I have played in multiple rock bands since I was, my whole adult life.
What's the most recent one?
Pardon?
What's the most recent band you've played in?
Well, right now I play guitar in a cramps tribute band and I play drums in a band called The Sinks with a backwards case, so you'll never find it. And I got, oh, why I'm running is to be a voice for hardworking Portland taxpayers who are not always getting a return on their investment.
Have you, do you have prior civic engagement experience? You've served on boards?
No.
Is it a run before? All right, so the first question I'm going to ask you all is, under the new charter, this is largely kind of a legislative position. So what would be the first policy you would want to put forward? So.
I mean, I think there's, there's probably two things. One would be, I don't know if it's a policy exactly, but I would like to see, certainly in District Three, but I would encourage all councillors to spend their first 90 days engaging with all the neighborhood associations so that, you know, we're all, we're all running right now, so we're hearing things from people, but it's important, once you're elected, to go and engage with these neighborhoods and sort of say, okay, if you get one thing that we can change in the next year or two years, we only get two years in office, right, District Three, what would it be? Right? And I think we need that big picture to try to like figure out how we can engage the city. Because for too long, frankly, the legislating's been happening at City Hall and the rest of the city is being left out, right? It's great that we have the central inner east side as part of that central city plan, but if we're not looking at engaging the rest of the city, if we're not looking at how we can transit into downtown, how we can improve that, I don't know how much benefit it's gonna provide to the city as a whole. Other than that, I mean, I think the number one thing is to look at why, what we can do to increase the speed of housing development, right? There's $120 million in expenditure accounts with the portable multifamily housing units that current, the current city council considers, oh, we spent that money, we allocated it, we did our job. But it's sitting in a bank account and it's not building homes. And there's a lot of reasons for that, but I think that's kind of honestly more than policy. We need to be figuring out why things are not functioning the way they're supposed to be functioning. There's a lot of ordinances, there's a lot of things that are not being used that are full potential on housing, and yet we also should look at if there's buildings that are not being, that the units are not being rented, right? Either we need to give landlords off to say, look, what are you gonna do to like increase the accessibility of those units, if possible? Or we might need to look at imposing rent control, stronger rent control with the state officers, because under the Housing Board, you can do that.
Great. Thank you. KJ?
My first priority in office really would be to establish the new form of government. I think that that is foundational and it is essential that we come to some sort of either consensus or high majority agreement about how we will function as a unit. I know that the Transition Advisory Committee has recommended six subcommittees to be filled by council members, and we would need to determine what those committees will be, if we take their recommendations, if we change them. At my recommendation, they include the Communications Committee, and I think that's very important. Right now, in my own experience with the neighborhood association and what I've heard from voters on the campaign trail, it's very hard to get in touch with City Hall, to find the right person, and to know how to do what you're supposed to do to get what, done what you want done. So for me, I'm all about streamlining government, streamlining the communications process. I agree with Brian that the neighborhood associations are key in that. That's one very strong pathway available to us. And I want to make sure that we agree on our priorities as a council and that we prioritize some values through which we will evaluate policy.
Thank you. Chris?
First thing I want to get past is living wages. Slight problem there, there's a state law that preempts a city from setting their own minimum wage, but there are three exceptions to that. And those exceptions are city employees, subcontractors, and in exchange for an incentive offered by the city. So I would love to see anybody who works for the city making enough money to live in the city. Any organization that we're sending out money to as subcontractors, and this includes the joint office, this includes the service providers for homeless services, that if you work for one of those organizations, you are not making poverty wages. You're able to also afford to live in the city where you work so that we're not subsidizing that work with public funds through SNAP, through Section 8 vouchers, through other low-income assistance. I would love to identify a source of revenue that we could use to offer incentive to employers for offering living wages. One particular idea is creating an insurance and retirement benefits pool that people could opt their employees into to save some of the small businesses that can't really afford to offer that, but to still give those employees a chance to get affordable healthcare, get retirement benefits. And sort of play with the numbers to see how much of this package do we need to subsidize for the small business to be able to afford, to pay the person? At least MIT says $27.01 is a living wage right now in Portland for a single adult with benefits.
So that would be, the $27.01 would be the, why the minimum wage you would want?
Yeah, but it is also indexed to inflation and other costs like housing.
Great, thank you. Dan?
I think everyone, many of us would probably agree that housing, there's a housing shortage in Portland, and so I would like us to address this first and foremost. I believe that the main political issue holding up our housing development is our history of exclusionary zoning, so single-family housing. And I think that we need to take on the job of upzoning the city. However, I acknowledge this is like a, this can be a touchy collective action problem. People don't want to upzone just their neighborhoods. They don't want towers in their neighborhoods, or they don't want to be the target of the upzoning laser, basically. So I think what we should do is develop a dynamic and gradual system where we can up some neighborhoods. I propose something on my website, I'm calling "One More Floor Zoning," which would allow a structure to be built up to one floor larger than its, than its tallest neighbor, for example. So I think that something like this, some dynamic zoning code could allow the city to grow healthy over time, prioritizing major arteries first and then growing slowly into neighborhoods as necessary. So I think that that is a policy I would like to champion in terms of a dynamic way to build healthy growth in our neighborhoods.
Great, thank you.
Your question was like the first two things you would do or?
First policy.
First policy would be, I agree, what was it, KJ?
KJ.
I agree with KJ, would be what this new government does in the systems, because the people that go in there first, they're either gonna, you know, be brave and really make sure that we have an actual voice and some concrete foundations on making change and having the tools to do that. Or if it doesn't go the right way, it could be just, you know, it's kind of for show, oh, look at all these people from the community, but without a lot of like teeth in it, I think that's very important. So that's number one. Number two would be transparency, because I think we have money being thrown at all kinds of things, but it should be really easy to find out what it's spent on. So on 82nd Avenue where I live, there's all these motels that have been bought. How much did they buy those for? Because, that's why I know you, Theo. We Shine. So I, I was involved with We Shine with kiosk in there, and that's a little tiny house village. I remember when it was being built, a couple neighbors came up, they were concerned. Buy Mart didn't want it. It works awesome. It's highly managed. And now Buy Mart, the last time I went there, they had a little presentation. Buy Mart's like, when are you guys gonna start working at Buy Mart? It gives people just, a little house is just the greatest thing. It's affordable. So focusing on things about how money gets spent for these issues, because $279 million a year for homeless services, I mean, there's no reason why there should be garbage everywhere. And that enforcement's part of that, too. So I would say making sure that District Three has enforcement for, and, you know, kind enforcement for the most part, because most people will want to go to a village like We Shine. I disagree with Dan on almost any, a lot of the stuff with the urbanism, because these main streets that we have are ecosystems that took 150 years to develop. They are full of locally-owned businesses. If you care about immigrants, if you care about people that want to start a business, it's in these older buildings, these vintage neighborhoods. Not only that, but they also offer tourism money. That's billions of dollars. It might be indirect, like, you know, there might be, you might look at a building and say, well, if that was a five-story building, it would be more efficient, but you lose all of the tourism dollars, you lose the economy of local businesses that we could start here. There's multiple, multiple reasons I could get into that. The same with neighborhoods. So I live in an old house. The first houses to get torn down are old houses. I've watched all department buildings and older houses get torn down to build micro-town homes and new apartment buildings that are not affordable at all. There's all kinds of stuff that we could do. Housing would be number one. But also, 22,000 people have left Portland. There are half-empty buildings. So this idea that we have to build, baby build, trickle-down affordability is not working. We've gave it 10 years and we're gonna lose all of the resources that we all share, especially if you care about service sector people and immigrants. The hospitality industry, which is based directly on if people want to visit Portland, is like one of the easiest jobs you can get, one of the better job, better-paying jobs, so that is super important to protect. So that's what I would be focusing on.
So that's an interesting point. I just want to clarify, so do you not believe we have a housing supply problem, or you just think that we need to solve the supply problem in a different way than?
We do not have a supply problem. We have an investor problem. This is, every single city in the world almost has this problem. New York City has condo towers that are empty because investors are pouring all their money into these, buying these units. So we have the equivalent here, but it's with these big apartment buildings. So a lot of people that you know that live in these new apartment buildings, they have high vacancy rates. So one of the things that would be great, why don't we penalize empty units so that these, the empty units will, they will be like, okay, we gotta rent these things? Because these are corporations you're up against. When you transfer land from locally-owned, local landlords and local people to global corporations, I mean, that's it, it's over. I mean, we're, we're just gonna be algorithmed out of 61% of our income. And who would want to live in a place like that long-term? So I'm, we gotta have long-term housing for people.
Dan, I'm curious, I just want you to respond to some of what you said. Because this is sort of an interesting, not necessarily philosophical debate, but coming from two different places.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so Dan, what did you think of some of that?
Well, I, I think, I'm curious to hear some of your numbers in terms of what you say the vacancy rate is in Portland, because my understanding is it's around 6%, which is not particularly high. That's, that's like a pretty?
When was that number?
That's from like a couple years, like 2022 or something.
So 2022, before 20,000 people?
But what do you think the vacancy rate is?
I don't really know what it is, to be honest, but I know that it's, it's definitely, when you lose 22,000 people in your city, that's like, it's like 1% or 2% of population. I mean, okay, so those people left. Where were they living?
People live, people double up with roommates or live, people live in like multi, people live in like, like alternative situations when they're just trying to make things work and they don't, they want to live in somewhere else.
So 2023, 6.8% vacancy rate in the urban core is higher, 8.7%.
Okay. I am curious, do you like what Division looks like right now?
I do. I actually live near Division and I, I think it's a very vibrant, like cool neighborhood. And I, I think that that's exactly the sort of thing that brings tourists in, is walkable, like dense, exciting neighborhoods with like music venues and restaurants and things. I don't think people really come to see old houses. I mean, I'd also like to point out that I hear people talking about, oh, they're tearing down these old buildings and that's such a shame. People own those buildings and they sold them, they like, they did what, like, they sold their building, they did what they wanted to do with their own private property. I don't think there's any shame in that. Like, I live in an old house and I, like, if I sell that house to somebody else, it's their property now, they can do what they want with it, is how I see it.
Chris, you work in housing.
I do.
And I'm curious what you think about sort of both of their points and where you fall on that spectrum, or if you fall somewhere else entirely. I mean, it seems like the kind of core issue is that, their core disagreement is that we have a lot of vacant union units, we don't have that many vacant units, and sort of who they're available to. What's, from the inside, what do you see?
Well, I mean, it's obviously a very complex issue, but I mean, to, hopefully both of you all will be excited about this. Dan, we no longer have single-family zoning. There's the residential project that has created upzoning all across every single family zone lot. In addition, to your point about preserving those, those corridors and having those important buildings, again, part of code has these historical overlays. Code has these ways that we want to prioritize development along the transit corridors versus in the middle of residential neighborhoods.
Yeah, but that's not preservation.
Well, can you let me have my turn? Thank you. So part of why it takes somebody who's an expert planner to understand what can be built in a place is because they have to understand the zoning and the overlay. And so, so inclusionary housing, one of the benefits, the incentives, is an extra 10 feet of height. So your extra floor could be achieved with an inclusionary housing building as long as that building is not also in a historical overlay zone or another place that would disallow that. So to the point of people in residences having issues with the tall buildings, there is a rule about the setback of how high you can be next to a residential lot. Things are complex. Things are, there definitely could be some simplification in the code, there are some things that conflict and that project has been ongoing. But there's some really exciting things coming out of the Portland Permitting and Development Bureau, formerly known as Bureau of Development Services. And I think the people who are the experts here are the best people to, to look to for those, those ideas. And that our role as councillors will be to take that expert staff advice and to implement it into policy using our judgment.
Great, thank you. Okay, I just want to keep going down to the end here, get everyone. So remember, the original question is, what is your first policy when you're in council?
Thank you for bringing that back up. So my number one policy is going to be to end urban camping, and that sounds harsh, but really I think what we're seeing on the streets, like I said before, we're seeing a lot of mental health and addiction going unchecked. And it's like, how long can we continue to allow this to happen? Like, it's still perpetuating, it's still going on. There are still people coming from all over the nation to Portland to freely use drugs and they have mental health issues and they're just languishing in the streets. And I think that's a number one issue for like bringing tourism back into the state, into the city, for bringing people back into the city. It's like, nobody wants to raise their kids in an environment like this, nobody wants to raise their kids.
What is a policy to end urban camping? I mean, would it be a declaration of we, we promise to end camping, which? I mean, would it be a declaration of, we, we promise to end camping, which I think every city council has, that every single one promises that? Like, what would your specific policy be?
It would actually be specifically working and being transparent, number one, with like, the money that we have. We have a billion dollars with the office, the joint, joint office of homeless services, billion with the B. We also have, you know, money collected within Portland as well, and it's like, where is that money being allocated to? I, as like, a, you know, healthcare practitioner with a background in HIV, addiction, mental health, I just see, and I've been going to so many meetings and seeing all these different groups, you know, you go and walk in, and it's like, oh, we're trying to make a change, we're trying to do something, we've collected, you know, millions of dollars of taxpayer money, but nobody on that team is actually a healthcare practitioner. So how can they even help with the situation? I mean, I'll just give you an example, there's that walk recovery group here in town, they just had like, a big walk, and I talked to the guy who's in charge of it, he's running for Portland City Council, too, and I was like, how many people have you guys actually helped recover? And he said, none. He literally said, I've helped none.
Who, who was it?
Uh, I forget what his name is.
What district?
It's Mike.
Yes.
Mike Marshall.
And so I was like, okay, so you've received millions of dollars of taxpayer money from all of us taxpayers, at least I pay my taxes, and it's like, you have, I just was hoping he was gonna say like, 250 people, 1,000 people, but it was, he literally proudly said, none. And I was like, so what's the point of your nonprofit? And he was like, just to do awareness of recovery, we do walks, and I'm like...
You're talking about Organ Recovers?
Organ Recovers, yes, they just had a walk, like...
I mean, in this context, there are many nonprofits that honor...
That's fine, but I'm just saying, as a taxpayer, I would hope that Organ Recovers actually has a team of healthcare practitioners on their team that are actually helping people. I don't need to be giving millions of dollars to put on a rah-rah walk. That seems kind of a waste of my money.
Yeah. Okay, Theo?
Yeah, I also work in housing, and I want to co-sign on what a lot of Chris Flory said. My first order of business would be get a coalition together, to get enough votes to fully fund Portland's street response to 24/7 365 service, full stop.
A quick follow-up question, where did you get the money? We're approaching a really tight budget cycle, every, every budget's gonna have to make cuts, where do you take that money from to fully fund Portland's street response?
It's gonna come from the police budget.
Okay. What, what part of that police budget, like, officers, or administration, or...
I mean, they have money for officers, they haven't spent right now, because they can't hire them.
So unfilled vacancies?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, nice.
Melody?
Top priorities, just according to the people I've talked to who work in the private sector and are small business owners, is every time, the homeless and potholes. And so, basically just create a city where we do routine things well.
And what, what would a policy look like, if you were to bring it to your city council colleagues that would address those things? Like, what's a specific policy?
A specific policy? You got me.
Okay.
Where would you take money? I mean, potholes cost actually a lot of money, where do you take the money away from?
I think we have a lot of money in Portland, and there's a lot, we tolerate a lot of waste, and we do good audit, you know, comprehensive audit, see where all this waste is, and turn it into doing something worthwhile.
Do you want to just go on your short questions, because we're gonna run out of time for this?
Sure, yeah, so rapid-fire questions, these are one, one to two words, two words max. We're gonna go fast.
Two hyphens count.
Try us.
Yeah, we'll see. TBD. And we'll start with you, Melody, for the first one. Do you think the Portland Police Bureau currently has too many cops, too few cops, or the right amount of cops?
The right amount of cops.
Okay, Theo?
They have the right amount of cops.
Okay, Sandy?
Too few.
Okay.
Too few. Too few.
Wrong question.
What's the right question?
What is the role they're playing, and are we adequately staffed for where the police need to be? Or are we asking them to be social workers?
What do you think, what do you think is, help me out with, with understanding?
Most of the calls cops are responding to are requiring an armed response that are about homelessness and livability issues.
Okay, great. KJ?
With Chris.
Cop-out, but I'll say...
I changed my answer with Chris.
Same, Brian?
Perhaps enough sworn officers, too few PS3 officers.
Okay.
We're, we're a lame, we hired 61 people after having 1,200 applicants for sworn officers, and we had 114 applicants for PS3, and hired 11.
Sorry, I'm gonna rephrase this question. Armed cops, too many, too few, or enough?
Too many.
Same answer?
I didn't think about that. I know, I got a little bit more radical, yeah. I'm gonna say too many.
I'd say same with you. PS3s, I don't think are armed.
Yeah.
Probably too few.
Do you support the city's time, place, and manner ordinance that they recently passed? Let's start with you, Brian.
On camping?
Yeah.
No.
No. Yeah, do you support the city's time, place, and manner ordinance that they pass, which restricts where and when people can sleep in public right with? Okay.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes, okay. Based on your, is that caffeine? Based on your knowledge of City Hall, which office or bureau would you most like to audit? Not because you think it's doing well, but because you are confused about what it's doing, you think there might be waste somewhere. Let's start in the middle.
Parks and Recreation, also whoever's in charge, it's PBO, like, whoever's in charge of that.
Got it.
I'd say the Housing.
Housing Bureau?
Housing Bureau.
Housing. They want to audit. No, just kidding.
The Housing Bureau, federal audit, state audit, that's not a problem there. I think it, it would be the Central Budget Office.
Okay.
PSE.
Okay.
PBO.
I think PBO. Okay.
Housing.
Housing, okay. Did the Oregon Legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing possession of hard drugs? Let's start with you, Dan.
Can you repeat?
Yeah, did the Oregon Legislature do the right thing by recriminalizing possession of small amounts of hard drugs?
Can I, I might need a no.
You get three words. 10.
Possession, no. But, public use, yes.
Okay.
So you're saying we should have criminalized?
I think we should criminalize rather than possession.
Okay. Chris?
No, criminalization doesn't work.
Okay. KJ?
Yes, because we don't have the infrastructure for decriminalization at this time.
Okay. Brian?
No, there should have been civil penalties for use in public.
Okay, Melody?
Yes, but, because we have to, but I don't believe in, you know, sorry, for possession. Okay, Theo?
Yeah, I voted for Measure 110, I thought we were gonna have a lot more services, and, you know, a lot more infrastructure, and then that never came to fruition, so, I mean, recriminalizing is also not working, we don't want to put people...
This is a really long one-word answer.
Everyone else talks about it, they're all the same thing, so...
It's a long word.
So we call it out.
No, no.
Okay, no, okay.
It was, do I believe in the...
Do you believe that the Legislature did the right thing by recriminalizing them?
I believe they did, yes.
Okay, Patrick?
Yes, but with social alternatives available.
Okay, okay. Who is the one other candidate in District 3, not necessarily in this room, in all of District 3, would you most like to serve alongside on the city council? Start with KJ.
It's my fault for making my dad... Exactly.
Okay, Brian?
Chris Flory.
Okay, Melody?
Well, I like Theo, because I just met him, but I really like Sandy.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, this has been so much fun, everyone has been so great to work with this whole season, just so inspired by so many awesome people running. You know, I feel like Rex and I have kind of formed a little friendship, and I'd like to work with him more, he's a really fascinating guy.
Great, thanks, Sandy.
For me, I'm still kind of like, researching all the candidates, to be honest, there's so many.
It's the...
We've all been hanging out, so like, I'm getting to know them more and more. Just like, off the top of my head, I think Steve Novick, I want to like, know more about him, and kind of research that.
Everyone does.
Yeah.
Patrick?
Chris?
Okay.
Has been really wonderful to me, and the people that I see them interacting with, and I think they're gonna be a strong advocate for the residents of District 3.
All right, thank you. Dan?
I think Steve Novick's a good safe answer.
Chris?
I would like to serve with my union sister, teacher Tiffany.
Got it. Do I have any other rapid-fire questions?
So which of the candidates currently on city council do you feel most aligned with your views?
It's a hard question, I would say none of them, but maybe Maps.
Okay.
Does Simone count?
If so, I can't remember.
Hard question for me, Dan Ryan, I guess? I think me is Maps.
Renee Gonzalez?
Carmen Rubia.
I like Dan Ryan and, sorry, I just went blank, who you just said?
Renee?
Renee.
Any other ones?
Nine.
Okay. I'm curious, and if you could all keep your response to one minute, that would be great. Obviously homelessness is sort of top of mind for Portland residents right now. Do you support staying in the joint, do you support the city remaining in the Joint Office of Homeless Services? Second part of that question, regardless of what you've said for the first part, is where do you think the city and county are, I guess, spending too much money, and where do you, if you think they're spending too much money in one area, where would you like to see them spend it instead? Dan?
Can we clarify?
Sure.
The city and county spending too much money?
Through the joint office, is what I think.
Just through...
Yeah.
All right. I think we will have to see first, who gets elected to city and county, and what that looks like in 2025, for starters, to see like, if they have some new ideas for what they want to do in terms of the joint office.
What do you want to do? Because you want to be on, you want to be one of those legislators, so what do you want to do?
Well, that's very, it's very important if we want to like, commit more money to work with them, like, do we believe in their vision? What I would like to see is a commitment to, to actually hitting their numbers, and if we don't hit those numbers, then I think we need to, we can talk about pulling out of the agreement entirely. The homelessness, I believe, is strongly like, their job to address, I believe homelessness. I think the city spends far too much addressing homelessness and mental health in general, as those are traditionally the counties' review, and I think in many cases, we're doubling up on spending in too many arenas with them, and I would like to see us refocusing on what the city traditionally spends money on, so like, infrastructure, schools, that can happen.
So those are all great arguments, why would you not just pull out of J O H S?
I, again, because I think it's worth giving them one more shot, if, if they have like, we have elections for county coming up, and we have elections for city coming up, and depending on like, if we feel like we can work with them better than they are now, then, then it might be a better, then it might be an option. If we continue to be gridlocked like we are now, then I think it's worth considering pulling out.
Okay, thanks. Patrick?
I think they should stay united for communication purposes, that's a lot of money they get, you know, that's a lot of money. You could buy 200 houses a year, and house five people, you know, per house, that's 1,000 of you, that's 1,000 people permanently housed, we can make group housing, shift the focus away from servicing every single part of the experience of being unhoused, to getting people that are gonna fall into that situation to be housed, so like, you know, service class and working-class housing.
So the joint office should buy, buy real estate?
Yeah, I mean, and campgrounds, I was a park ranger, I mean, people, why are we promising everybody that comes here to have a free place to live, I mean, a free motel room with your own bathroom, I mean, I don't, I don't have that luxury.
So, so at this stance, the, the majority of the joint office's funding comes from the Supportive Housing Services measure, which is not available currently for real estate, basically. You can't build housing with that money. They can provide rent assistance, but they're, you know, the county is not in the business of actually building. Do you think, and obviously Metro...
Yeah, there's lots of...
Wanted to bring some of that money back for affordable housing. Do you, do you support Metro taking back some of that SHS money in order to build more affordable housing?
I mean, I'm not really sure, it seems like there's so much bureaucracy there that it needs to be streamlined and made efficient, because, you know, like, Sandeep, I think his number one point is efficiency, and money being spent on things that make sense, and it seems like you could shift it to Metro, but if everybody's spending money on the same stuff, you know, that doesn't make any sense, so really, to, to focus on where it's going and have one, one bureaucracy that does it would be better than shifting it all around for different parts of it.
Thanks.
For me, I would say, yes, we should like, pull out from the Joint Office of Homeless Services. Like I was saying, we were, they have had so much money, and we have not seen any results from it. I would like to see that money, you know, once again, not be going to nonprofits just willy-nilly, and, you know, Dan Ryan just came out with this statement saying that $17 million of Portland taxpayer funds is kind of missing, which is like, it, to me, that's a shock, because if I looked into my bank account, I saw $17 million...
When did he say that?
It just came out, I didn't...
What do you mean by missing?
Like, there was no accountability, they just gave nonprofits money, and they never like, it was just like, here you have a nonprofit, here's $5 million, but we're never gonna check up on you, exactly like what I was saying, do you produce results? Right? So that's like, a big issue for me, where I think like, we need to get out of that whole system and that kind of thought process as well. For me, where I would like to see that money allocated to is hospital systems, and we have so many here in Portland, whether it's a nonprofit hospital or a for-profit hospital, they have doctors, nurses, psychiatrists, they have people that can help with substance abuse disorders, and like, kind of guide someone through a pathway to getting to sobriety, and at least providing them with a mental health, a mental health baseline checkup, just to see where they're at. I just see so many cases of where we're not addressing the root cause, and we're going to housing first, and I'm not a big advocate for housing first, I'm a big advocate for treatment first. Because once you are able to like, get out of your chemical coma, or at least get a baseline mental health checkup, then you can move forward and be like, okay, how am I gonna, how am I gonna proceed in life?
Thanks.
Yeah, I think that we should stay as team members with the, with the county on this, you know, they are, they're doing a lot of important work, I'm thinking about cultivate initiatives. We Shine, an organization that I'm on the board of, we get money from the joint office, I also work in the rent assistance world a lot, you know, it's, the joint office is real clunky, and they're real slow, it's imperfect, there's a lot of things that I There's a lot of things that I would like to see them be more efficient in how they're spending their money. But everyone is doing like such important work and they're very intentional about it. And I think that we need to stick with it. It's a big, this is such a big problem we have. So we have so many unhoused people. And so, you know, it's not gonna, you can't just switch it, turn on a switch and put everyone inside overnight. And so they've made a lot of progress and I think we should stick with it.
So, I mean, several people, I think, have mentioned the fact that, or the argument that the Joint Office doesn't require accountability from its nonprofits. Is that your experience with We Shine?
No, not at all.
So like, what do you tell, like, what is your personal experience? Like, what is the county demanding you tell them? And like, how does that, how does that work?
I mean, we, we have to submit what our plans are to, you know, to build the microvillages. And often, we have to submit the same plans over and over. You know, it's not like they're just ripping checks, you know, where it's a, it's pretty slow.
Do you have to report the number of people you have, like statistics over time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Are you on HMIS?
What?
You're doing the Homes Management Information System reporting?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You guys, how many villages does We Shine have now?
We have two that are operational and one that will be open in January, if everything goes right.
One's in Park Rose, did I forget?
Yeah, one's in...
Okay, that's the one by, by Mark?
That's the one by by Mark. That's the first one.
Okay.
The second one just opened, we call it Avalon Village, opened on 19th and Division in August. And the third one is at St. Andrews Episcopal in North Portland.
Okay, great, thanks. Melody?
Yes, I support combining resources with the county. Of course, with a critical eye on outcomes and how the resources are being spent. You know, we need to expand sanctioned camping, I suppose, rehab centers. And it would be nice to, you know, so there's a lot of, get rid of the bureaucratic obstacles that are keeping turning empty commercial spaces into shelters.
Great, thank you. Brian?
Joes has been a huge success. And there's a lot of glib answers saying that it's not. And when you dig into it, as you guys are journalists, hopefully you already know this, like Sharon Myron says it's a failure, doesn't show why it's a failure. Rene Gonzalez says it's a failure, doesn't show why it's a failure. Sandeep says it's a failure, why is it a failure? We've housed 5,000 people. What has the city done, right? I do think that it may be worth looking at whether supportive housing services is the best place to put all of that money. I would only consider moving it if there were not other opportunities, right? Because there's, there's a lot of people who are unhoused who do not need support services, right? And so those people need to be getting housing as well, right?
So you think the Joint Office is just doing swimming lane?
No, I mean, it's a giant bureaucracy. Like, of course, there are like efficiency issues, but to say that it's a failure is to ignore the facts, right? To say that they don't have, that we need a by-name list is to ignore the facts. HMIS is effectively a by-name list. There are desires to have a more accurate by-name list, but talk to the experts, right? Like, let's say...
Well, I think the experts have said that HMIS is woefully inadequate.
But, but what they've also said is that 100% accuracy of the group is not necessary to succeed at fixing this problem, right? Let's say that there, we think that there's 11,000 people who are sheltered or street homeless, right? That's what, that's what the official number is. What if that number was 12,000? How much money do you want to spend to make sure that we increase that number to get that extra thousand indicated? Knowing that that database itself does not put anyone into housing, right? And so there's a lot of words going around that are saying that it's a failure because we don't know how many people are on the street. That's a hard thing to figure out and it costs a lot of money. And if we, as a city council and the constituents, like want to spend money there, that's what they want. I don't think that's a good use. I mean, my wife is working at Homeless Health for, since 2011. That's where I get my numbers, not just from her, but from people who are experts in behavioral health, people who are doing the statistics for Joes. When Sharon Myron put out that statement, I contacted, I can't give you someone's name because it's off the record, right? But I talked to one of the people involved in evaluations at Joes and I said, what's wrong with these numbers? What does this mean that we don't have a by-name list? Well, we do have a by-name list. We have to have something like that in order to get that money. It's a federal directive, right? So there's a lot of talk. And I would really encourage you guys to dig more into the data and the facts because there's a lot of talk that people are getting quoted, but they're not actually giving you an answer, right?
How do you feel about, I mean, I think some people would make the argument that the demonstration of failure is a fact when you go out on the streets and you see people suffering outside. I mean, isn't that a failure that we're allowing this to happen?
We can't solve problems overnight. 10 years we've been sweeping the homeless and that hasn't changed anything, right? If anything, homelessness has gotten worse, right? There's more unhoused people. They're unhoused because we can't afford housing. There's this other myth going around that like everyone's leaving Portland and it's all the wealthy. That's actually not true. The numbers show that it's middle-class people who are leaving. They're leaving not only because it's not safe, in their opinion, right, in their perception, but also because they can't afford to live here, right? We don't just need affordable housing, we need housing that's affordable. And those are two different things, right? Affordable housing is code for low-income housing. That's just what they call it now, right?
Okay, thank you.
But yeah, I think we should absolutely stay in Joes. We don't have another option. That's, that's the other piece. No one has an answer for what else they would do if we closed Joes, right? People are saying we need 4,000 more shelter beds. That would cost $500 million and take 53 shelter sites. So anybody who's telling you that is either just lying to you or is not doing their homework. Because that's not tenable.
Great, all right, thank you. KJ, with JHS?
I think that we should continue to work with the county in this way. I do not have a specific budget item that I would like to seek, but I'm not yet familiar enough with the budget.
Okay, Chris?
I support committing to the Joint Office and taking political gamesmanship out of it. I think one of the issues right now is that there are people running for office who are making their name on Joes' back. One thing I'd like to see us spend less money on is the reactionary, well, I would love to say sweeps, but Joes doesn't do the sweeps. Those come from different areas of the city. But when we treat the symptom, but not the root cause of an issue, it is more money out the door. So I'd like to see us spend more money on things like rent assistance because every person you prevent from becoming unhoused means that when we do run people through the system and we get 5,000 people who have passed through the Joint Office and been sheltered, many of them going on to be housed, that we are stemming the tide of people behind them or entering being homeless because a flat tire, a medical thing is, one paycheck separates a lot of us from being right there with the folks out on the street.
Where do you, where, if we're gonna spend more money on rent assistance, where should we take that money from?
There, I believe it can be used from the Support of Housing Services. And one of the issues has been getting the money out the door because of a lack of staff. But with the idea of increasing the living wage, the wages of people who are doing the work, I would actually say we're expanding the staff to get the money out the door.
Well, that seems like it would just be more money, though. I'm saying if you want to spend more money, if you want the Joint Office to spend more money on rent assistance, you're gonna have to cut from somewhere else in the budget. So where would you cut?
Have they spent through the unspent millions of dollars?
They've allocated all of the unspent dollars.
Oh, it's been allocated. I'd have to look at what everything had been promised to. But I would essentially, if all other things being equal, say, provide more rent assistance front-loaded and have less planned out over time, if that's, if that's a choice I have to make.
So like six months rather than 12 months, maybe?
Do you mean...
Six months of rent assistance versus promising 12 months?
Oh, no, I mean, providing more rent assistance in the fiscal year, one or two years, rather than holding money back to provide it for four or five years.
Okay. I don't think that's how their budget works. I don't think.
I haven't looked at the Joes' budget.
I think they budget just annually, not planning for five, but I could, I could be wrong.
If it's just annual, then last year's money is, because it's, it's allocated, it needs to be spent. Finding ways to reduce the, the dead time between allocating the money and getting out the door is going to be worth the expense, I think.
Thank you. Fun question?
Yeah, let's go ahead. Let's see what you want.
Sure. No, thank you.
Okay. Fun question?
To us, something you know what, what Chris was saying. Groundscore, right, has two staff and they've housed 17 people. They said, we cannot manage more people without more staff. So it might be necessary to say, we have $1 million here that's not getting spent. $50,000 or $100,000 to getting that extra staffer would get that money spent, right? So...
Fun question. What were you best known for in high school?